Art Center Board of Trustees, Peggy Lau.
Hi, I am interested in being a board of trustee for the Art Center. Been back in Sioux City for the past ten years. In the past eight years, we started at the Asian Fest and I feel like my presence will bring some diversity into the Art Center.
I appreciate applying. I go out to Asian Fest all the time and appreciate that. I know you put a lot of hard work into that as well and I'm sure would work hard on this committee, so, thank you.
Thanks, Alex.
Thank you. Thank you, appreciate you coming down.
Thank you.
Next is Building and Housing Code Board, Kimberly Willer.
I submitted my application for the Building and Housing Code Board. I worked at Mid-American for twenty-nine and a half years and retired from there in 2017. When I was at Mid-American, I served on the Home Builders Board, also served on the Heating and Cooling Association Boards, so I'm familiar with all the building codes. My husband and I have around forty-two rental properties here in town in Morningside and I want to serve as a landlord representation on the board.
What'd you do at Mid-American?
I worked in the Energy Efficiency Department, Accounting Departments, Marketing Departments.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Good addition, that's for sure. Thank you.
Kosovo Sister City, Brian Adams.
Good afternoon, my name is Brian Adams, as you well know. I'm interested in the Kosovo Sister City. I've lived here in Sioux City for the past seventeen years and have been a member of the Iowa Air National Guard for the last nineteen years. And we also have a state partnership with them. And my role in the Iowa Air National Guard is an intelligence officer, so I understand other countries very, very well and think I can bring, excuse me, I think I can bring some idea of the culture to this developing nation and help out with the partnership.
And you've been there?
I have not been there, but that will probably change this year.
Okay. I know a lot of the, a lot of the Guard has been there, so, helping out, so that's good.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks for having me.
Thanks.
Mr. Jim. Knew you couldn't stay retired too long, so...
Hello.
Hi, Jim.
I've got notches and, I look at this as a great opportunity. I like to be involved and we're all in this for the same thing, in this city, in this country, in the world. And I think you could sit back, do nothing, or you can get involved. I served twenty-three years in the Navy, lived in Japan four years, lived in Bahrain six months. I was fortunate enough to volunteer at Mary Trailia and teach English to immigrants and I've learned a lot. Guatemala, Ecuador, France, beneath all kinds of countries, different students, and you can work together and accomplish great things. So I think this would be a, it's just starting. I like to start things, I can lend my leadership and ideas and judgment to it. I appreciate the chance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it, Jim. Parking and Skywalk Board of Trustees, Reagan Cody.
Hello, Reagan Cody, Executive Director for Downtown Partners, 418 Pierce Street, Sioux City, Iowa.
Tell us why you want to serve.
Executive Director of Downtown Partners, no. Parking and Skywalk is a big piece and a great piece to downtown Sioux City. So it is something that I've been on since I started nine years ago and something I hope to continue on. I hope you allow me to do so with all of these commissions and boards, but it is an important piece for us, so, we feel pretty strongly about it.
You'll do a great job.
No, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Reagan.
Thanks, Reagan. Brian rescheduled, so we'll go to Yamanashi Sister City, Julie Haas. Hi, Julie.
Hello.
You'll do a great job, too. Now it might be tougher for you than that. Tell us why you want to serve.
Well, I'm serving right now on the commission and it's an exciting time because we're going to be sending middle school students over to Japan this May or June. And, so, we're looking right now to get sponsors for the children and I would encourage anyone here to go to Japan. It's a great opportunity, a great experience, life-changing, it's a wonderful culture.
What is it?
Dan, I know how much you love to ride planes, so I encourage you to.
You really ride a plane when you go there, I've been there. Would that be a good time to go, for me? Middle school, you said? Yeah, 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 it's a great.
When are they planning?
Sorry?
What time that they're planning?
Well, I don't think it's been totally set, but I believe it's in late May or early June is when we're going.
Their kids are still in school.
Right.
At that time, by the way. They go to school pretty much.
I'm not sure.
Yeah, they do.
So...
Perfect.
Thanks for applying.
It's a great place to go.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'll tell you that. It's a great place to go. We'll move to Consent Agenda Items, three through fourteen-eight. Will constitute the consent agenda today. Please come forward as I read that. The item, if you want to speak on it, state your name and address for the record. If you want to come on an item not on the agenda, please come up under Citizen Concerns. Again, we need your name and address for the record. I'll move the consent agenda. Second. Reading of the City Council Minutes of December seventeenth and twentieth, two thousand and eighteen. Motion number four, motion acknowledging the Board of Adjustment Actions from December twelfth, two thousand and eighteen. Five is the resolution adopting the two thousand and fourteen fourth quarter supplement to the municipal code. Six is a resolution authorizing fire rescue to apply for a fire prevention safety grant to fund the purchase of smoke alarms for use in the Safe Home Program. Seven, a resolution is adopting plans and specification for the Riverside Park swimming pool recoating project. Eight, a resolution amending a position classification by approving an updated job description for wastewater treatment plant maintenance mechanic. Nine is the resolution approving change order number one for authorized payment to utility service company for Singing Hills Ground Storage Reservoir Exterior Painting Project. Ten, a resolution awarding purchase order to Ed's Divers Board for the two thousand, for two two thousand and nineteen Ford escapes. Eleven are actions relating to agreements and contracts. A is a resolution approving change order number two in contract with ground effect for the Rose Hill Park improvements and expansion. B is a resolution approving a subordination agreement with Carrington Mortgage Services for the remediation of lead-based paint at eighteen oh two twenty seventh street. C is a resolution approving an amendment number one to the work order for number, work order number thirty-three for R S and H Iowa to, for a land release at the Gateway Airport. D is a resolution approving a contract to D M T Clear Gas Solutions for the Renewable Fuels Equipment Procurement Number Two Project. Twelve are actions relating to property. A is a resolution inviting proposals for the sale of land in the Rose Hill Urban Renewal Area announcing the intent to accept the proposal of Nuno Real Estate and scheduling a public hearing.
Mayor, I'd like to be shown as a no vote, just to be consistent with our considerations back in October and I, I know staff at that time was denying and, and there was some discussion about not approving because there were some, hopefully some development opportunities on the line. They voted no then, I...
Pull, you want to pull the item for a second?
Do I want to pull the item? Is that the best way? Okay.
Yes, we need to pull it for a second.
All right. I thought I could just indicate I was a consent ones.
Attention, if you abstain at all. Call the row, please.
Capron?
Aye.
Brecken?
No.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
B is a resolution approving a First Amendment to the Limited Track and Land Use Agreement for the Agra Trading for the Use of the Rail Yard and Property in the South Bridge Business Park. C is a resolution approving an acknowledgment reimbursement agreement with I E D A regarding the certification of property in the South Bridge Business Park. Thirteen are applications for beer and liquor license. See the list, come forward if you have any questions. Fourteen, receive a minute, see the list, come forward if you have one. Want to be heard on any of those items? Seeing none, we'll vote. Oden?
Oh, okay.
Passes five zero fifteen, is a hearing in ordinance vacating a portion of Pierce Street at twenty-seven twenty and twenty-eight oh one. Pierce Street P and Z recommends approval. I'll move first reading. Second?
Yep, Michelle Bossen, I'm the Chair, Planning and Zoning. This went through with full recommendation, Planning and Zoning, no comments or questions.
People driving on streets that are not ours.
I think, that actually comment might have came up, but, I think the order of how things worked.
Everybody in?
I am.
Passes five zero, anybody opposed to waiving the statutory rule?
No.
No, move that.
Second.
Brecken?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Second and third, I'll move it.
Aye.
A little early there.
Do you have to hold it down for a while?
No, don't hold it down, just push it once. If you hold it down, it goes back and forth. You're stuck, it was Pete's and his is, it's good.
Passes five zero. Sixteen, no ordinance renaming of right-of-way at twenty-seven twenty and twenty-eight oh one. Pierce Street is Pierce Street, P and Z recommends approval. I'll move first reading. Second? Passes five zero. Anybody opposed to waiving the statutory rule? I'll move it.
Second.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Brecken?
Aye.
Second and third? Passes five zero. Seventeen is an ordinance amending several chapters entitled, twenty-five, the municipal code entitled zoning and sign, P and Z recommend approval. I'll move it. Second?
Um, yes, this item, there were several things that were being proposed to be changed within the zoning ordinance. The staff explained those really well. I think that there's going to be tweaks to the zoning ordinance as we, as we move through here.
Even though we spent all that money to get all this done, I will continue to have these until we spend another two hundred and seventy-eight thousand ten years from now.
Well, you know, I, I don't know what to say about that. Maybe it needs to be updated more frequently and then we wouldn't have that, that large a space in between updates. But, you know, the changes that they proposed definitely made sense. There wasn't, there was some discussion and some questions, but overall, there was a positive recommendation.
Jeff sleeping or no, just not?
Pete, we're waiting, there you go.
You probably weren't very quick on the draw with your gun back when you were a cop. Passes five zero, is anybody opposed to waiving the statutory rule? No? Move it. Second?
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Brecken?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Move second and third.
Second.
Passes five zero. Eighteen is a hearing in ordinance rezoning portion of Leach and Dayce Avenue. The petitioner is Lindt Film Services, P and Z recommends approval. I'll move first reading. Second? Anyone to be heard? Passes five zero, is there anybody opposed to waiving the statutory rule?
No.
I'll move that. Second?
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Brecken?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye, I'll move second and third. Second? Passes five zero, hearing, nineteen is a hearing in ordinance rezoning. Ten zero zero two, Lewis Boulevard, petitioner Eric Reyes and Cliff Tufti, P and Z recommends approval of this item, two thousand and eighteen dash zero zero six two. I'll move first reading. Second? As I understand this, before you make your comments, I just want to clarify. Staff recommended this, or not?
Um, I believe at the time staff did recommend it, yes.
Staff recommended it. And you guys, as usual, when you don't pass one, you went three to three because you can't seem to get the last person there to vote, to break these ties, which I think is a real, real problem. More, all the more reason why a phone-in should be required so that we have either a negative or a positive vote. Because to me, it's negative only because you couldn't get a quorum. I mean, you couldn't get everybody there, so... So...
Yeah, when it was presented to us, the, the item was on your agenda, nineteen and twenty were presented as, as one item, one zoning change. The, the planning and zoning was okay with going ahead and rezoning or recommending rezoning of ten oh two Lewis Boulevard to, to general commercial. But then there's a northern part of that that was kind of a strip of land along, or on Lewis and that, that's the other...
By the alley there.
Yeah, by the alley there. And, you know, we went back and forth and around. The neighbors were there, the neighbors are mostly there to talk about the vacation of the alley, but the neighbors were there. And it just, it, it was a hard decision, I would say, and that's probably why you saw it split. And it came down to, do we really want to rezone a strip of land? At some point that...
But what do you do with that strip of land if you don't tie them together?
And that's a good point. We, we had said that, do you, do you go ahead and do it? Then you're kind of locked into that, a strip being there? Or do you wait until maybe in the future there's a opportunity to redevelop that land into a, a bigger project? And you're not stuck with a, with a strip right there. So either redevelop it now, or you redevelop it later into something maybe bigger.
But the staff, did you recommend both okayed, or just the one? You recommended both, right?
Actually, there are three items there, staff recommended approval of all three.
I thought, okay. Okay. All right, that's what I wanted to make sure.
And the alley would remain open for the other, the neighbors and stuff, right? There was that situation?
Yeah, I mean, if you weren't going to rezone the, that strip of land, the north properties, there's no reason to vacate the alley. So, the way the recommendation went, it, it doesn't really support the vacation of the alley then if you weren't going to recommend to rezone. Right?
All right, let's have citizen comment then. Names and addresses, please, when you come to the microphone, if there are any.
My name's Ron Walkalorff. I live at twenty-four oh eight Eleventh Street. The alley is directly behind us. We went to the Planning and Zoning Commission, as mentioned, and it was total confusion there. We don't know if the alley is going to be the only entrance way into this business. Are they going to allow for paving, what their whole plan is? There was no clear-cut answers to any questions that were directed to them. And we use that alley quite often, especially during the winter, since Eleventh Street is a priority street and we have to find parking elsewhere or our vehicles get towed. The alley is used by our neighbor who's not here because of work commitments. He uses it every day, him and his wife park back there every day. So we're still concerned about the alley, let alone the fact that there's going to be another used car lot right there. There's already two directly across the street.
Okay, but let's, let's clarify, are you, nineteen has nothing to do with the alley, so...
Pardon me?
Nineteen, I just want to make sure that, are you opposed to all three items?
I'm opposed to everything, I mean...
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Okay, yeah. So I thought I just killed three birds with one stone.
Yeah, that's cool. I just want to make sure where you were at. Okay. Anything else?
Mayor, before we continue, could, could we have the screenshot of the, how the property's laid out? I, I was out there looking at it. I just want to, I want you to identify where your property is, please.
Jeff Hanson, Community Development Operations Manager. So this map clarifies the property on the southern portion of the block, the southwest corner, to be rezoned from S C to G C. This is the corridor block that was approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission for rezoning. The alley vacation is the west half of the east-west alley which divides the block. And then the rezoning from N C four to G C is this parcel here on the corner. I wanted to clarify that as a condition of support from staff, the alley was included with the rezoning request because this lot does not meet the minimum lot size requirements to be rezoned to suburban commercial. Therefore, you have to tie the two properties together and the only way to do that is with the alley vacation. I believe this gentleman lived in one of these residents here on the north side.
But which one?
Right in the middle.
Right here?
Yeah. And it was brought up at the last meeting, at the zoning meeting, that the north-south alley is drivable. Well, I don't know when the last time anybody had driven down there, but you have to swerve to avoid the potholes. Now, is that north-south alley, being the southern part, going to also be utilized by this car lot? Nobody's answered that question.
The north-south alley will stay open. That, that's not up for vacate?
There's no request at this time to vacate any other alley than, other than the west half of the east-west alley.
But my concern is, with the business being butted up against that alley, are they going to be using that to access their business there? It's in bad enough shape as it is now.
Our understanding on a preliminary site plan that they'll be pulling access off of Tenth Street, which is to the south of the site. There would actually be required screening along this alleyway due to the residential property to the east. So our understanding is that all access is coming in off the south side on Tenth Street.
They'd still have to use the north-south alley though, wouldn't they?
No, they would come in directly off of Lewis onto Tenth and then north into the site, or they can work their way through the neighborhood, get over to Tenth Street and then come in off of, I'm not sure if we have... There's a potential site plan that they've submitted which shows an entrance off of Tenth Street.
Because they're not going to get a curb cut on...
That is correct, there will be no curb cut.
And state will make them close that alley probably, right? As far as a curb cut? Vacated.
Well, right now it's public right-of-way.
If it's vacated, yeah.
If it's, if it's vacated, that would be, I guess, up to the Iowa Department of Transportation to make that determination. Staff's recommendation, if the vacation were supported, that we would require an easement, an access easement for these property owners to maintain that alley for their access. Now whether D O T closes it or not, that's out of our control.
Well, they probably wouldn't if you're doing that, I'm guessing. Okay.
That's all I have.
So you use, you use the alley, the east-west alley portion and that leg, you use that to access Lewis?
Yes, the west part of that, east-west alley.
Not for your garage or not for any part of your property? It's to access seventy-five, am I correct on that?
Yes, we, we park back there and then we go to seventy-five from the, to the west.
There are, there are garages on those properties, you can see here.
So for the most part, the north-south alley doesn't get used?
It does.
Okay.
But it's not maintained at all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Cliff Tufti, one twenty-five West Thirty-Fourth Street, Sioux City. I'm the petitioner, I think, on this rezoning. And I know that you've probably, based on Planning and Zoning recommendation, probably will approve this item. But they really, we applied for him as one application, so that's the reason I'm going to talk to you now. I have, this is going back probably six months now. This property was for sale. I talked to the eventual buyer of the property and I said I'm just almost positive that we won't have any trouble rezoning this. So we have a purchase agreement, one purchase agreement for both parcels that we're talking about, subject to rezoning. I have to tell you, I was a little shocked when, at the planning and zoning, that it was not, everything was not approved. I understand the limitations on the size of that little parcel, about the Eleventh Street and Lewis Boulevard. That's why we wanted to put them all together. Little history of both those parcels, and this goes back quite a number of years. There used to be houses on all of those three houses, on the one south portion and then one house on the northern portion. I purchased all the houses and tore them down only as an effort to improve the neighborhood, primarily because my business is just down the street and these houses were not good residential houses. You can guess that they were probably just, well, they were all rental houses and who knows who's living there. Not that there's anything wrong with that, but they just were in poor, poor shape and so that's why I bought them and tore them down. Hopefully someday to sell the property so it could be commercially developed. The, the alley, I know it's, we applied, we wanted to have that vacated and it would be a great improvement if it was vacated and we took it over and it was rezoned, primarily because it's just a dirt alley right now. And it's not maintained by the city in any way, shape or form. I think that the eventual buyers of this property are going to put up a nice used car lot. And this area is a commercial area. I think it's the plan of the city, I think it's the desire of the city to have all of Lewis Boulevard, at least the part that abuts Highway seventy-five or butts Lewis, to be zoned commercial. And I think that's kind of the, the lead that you've given everybody in, in town. I think that's the idea you've given us, that whether it's zoned commercial now or not, someday it will be. And it should be, because that's what it is. It's not, it'll never be developed as residential. The highest and best use of that is to, is to be zoned commercial. And like I say, I have a, I have a purchase agreement with it, one purchase agreement. I don't have two purchase agreements for the two parcels. I have one. And it's taken me six months so far to go along and get this, to this stage where we could have it rezoned. And I respectfully asked that everything be rezoned and that the alley be vacated. And I'll say one thing, if the alley is vacated, I would guarantee that it'll be maintained in a lot higher standard than it is being maintained right now. I know the, the people that want to put up the used car lot and do the development there are going to do a great job. I know if they're going to pave it, but I would guess they probably would, so... Do you have any questions?
You have, are you in agreement then that the, if the alley's vacated, that there would be easements? Private easements?
Absolutely, there should be easements. And I'm familiar with the property owners that have the homes there. One of those homes is still in my name, although I have, it has been sold. But I, my only objection to the whole thing on the rezoning is they should have rezoned the entire block, the entire half-block. I don't know why we're spending the time to do this.
Yeah, I think the decision back then was made to do it on a case-by-case basis, I think.
Was it?
In, in the write-up. Yeah, because, because they deliberated on that. They agreed with, some agreed with you, others didn't. And they decided, well, we'll do it on a case-by-case basis, but it makes it very difficult for residents and for businesses to find that, that good compromise where you both can coexist.
Like, you know, I can understand a little bit of the case-by-case, but it really makes, makes it difficult for everybody.
It's a hodgepodge kind of, you know?
Well, it is. I mean, you could have, yeah, if there's three different property owners on the three houses left, you could have those rezoned one at a time. And eventually that's going to happen, guys, so, I really appreciate your time. No more questions?
Do you, well, another question, would you, would you be willing to then submit a site plan? I mean, a site plan's not required, correct? Would you be willing to, to, to submit a site plan about setbacks and landscaping and access points?
I, I'm thinking, and Brent will tell us whether that's true or not, but I'm, I'm pretty sure a site plan's been submitted.
Um, they have, Mayor and Council, Brent Nelson, Senior Planner, they have submitted a site plan. Needs a little work. It's not fully complete, but I didn't see any reason to require that much site plan work when we still had zoning to do. They will submit, submit a site plan to staff, is the normal way. And we will review it and take care of the, those issues at the Development Review Committee level, at the staff level.
But will, will the residents, would they have input on that? But will, will the residents, would they have input on that?
The council and our commission can direct us to do that, normally not, because, well, most site plans don't have any opposi, don't have any opposition or issues. You can direct us to do, direct, direct us to bring that back before the commissioner, council, or both, prior to DRC. Or at least prior to issuing any permits.
Well, I mean, just to be clear, I have no problem. If you tell me you're gonna do something, I know you will, cause I know your reputation. So I'm not questioning that. I'm just trying to make it clear for the residences, because you, if they're gonna have an easement for access and you're improving that west leg of the east-west alley, that's a win-win for them. However, if the north-south alley, if that's being blocked or if that's being used as access or, or in and out of the business, that could create some traffic problems for them. So that's why I'm asking where the access points are, what's the setback, is there screening, that kind of... You and I, I'm okay with you. If you said, Dan, I'm gonna do this, I don't have a problem with that, but sometimes it's good to put it in a plan so that they all know and we all have a common understanding.
I think the resident, Ron's gonna be real pleased when this whole thing's done. I, I know he may disagree with me a little bit. No, I didn't, but I, that's a different story. But, you know, I hope that we don't have to come back and do this again. And I'm serious, we started this whole process probably six months ago. It's, it's been a long, drawn-out affair, and I just, I just hate to see it.
So the access is coming in then from the south?
Yes, they're, according to their site plan they submitted, which, like I said, has some cosmetic work to be done on it, but is, you know, not a big deal. The curb cut will come off of Tenth Street. They will also be able to use the alley like anyone else. As far as Eleventh Street, there's not enough setback between seventy-five Lewis and the property line to, to allow a curb cut on that. So the only two, and the DOT certainly won't allow another curb cut off of seventy-five. So the only two curb cuts there's gonna be is one off of Tenth Street and perhaps some use of the alley.
Well, and Dan, I think your idea about the site plan or your question is good, because the site plan was included with the RCA, but it says staff will likely require some revisions to setbacks, landscaping, and access. So I think it'd be really nice to have you, if it takes direction from the council to keep you involved, to make sure your concerns are addressed, then I think we need to have you still involved in this.
Well, we certainly will still be involved in that, on, on working to, to make sure the site plan meets all the requirements. Like I said, it's, it's, the access requirements, the ordinance requires the curb cut to be a little bit further to the east than is shown.
I thought I heard you say, Brent, that we don't normally do this. That's why I'm pointing this out.
Don't normally do a complete site plan before the zoning occurs. It's a waste of money if the zoning doesn't pass.
Yeah, we don't, we don't normally bring these back to commission and council. You can direct us to do that, if you wish. Normally, they're, we'll hammer those issues out at the staff level. Okay, I understand.
Was there, was there a discussion about what other uses could be permitted on that site under the GC?
Yes, there was. The car lot...
You gave me the same look now as you gave me when I was on planning zoning.
That's pretty much his standard look.
We don't usually have scrolls for this, but it worked out better that way. The GC uses allows as a, without conditional use permit or anything.
Right.
Things like daycares, which we would have on the south, but not, couldn't possibly fit on the north. Office buildings, places of assembly, preschools, assisted livings, transitional service, some indoor recreational, indoor, commercial, retail. And some things like, convenience store with the, with normal, just like we have to the north. And then we get into things like grocery stores and hotels and motels, which are not gonna happen here. We thought it was important when we were looking at that north little leg. What we're gonna have there is, is some asphalt, maybe concrete, and a handful of cars, maybe, one of which would probably be up on one of those display things. For the long term, and I, I don't know if I should be, in the long term, we figured that would be a fairly transitional use. It doesn't take long to take out the cars and the paving if something else comes along. So we figured that would be a good mid-term, just between what is now and what we have in the future. The commission disagreed with us on that, however. So I don't think we have any uses that are much more intense than the, actually, we don't have any, any uses that are more, gonna be more intense than the car lot. We think it's a good, their staff thought, Jeff and me thought it was a good transitional use, especially compared to previous actions on this site.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, thanks, guys.
Anyone else? You put that back on the screen, by the way.
Jesse Holmes, twenty-four oh eight Eleventh Street. I also own the home there. I guess I don't know how I feel about the whole thing. I mean, I, I see that it could be good. I don't know if I wanna oppose it or not, you know, I may, you know, I don't know. Now, is this something that would raise my taxes in the next two, three years? Is this something that could force me out of my home within the next two, three years? Yeah, I don't understand everything, so if you could, you know, let me know.
We can't force you out of your home.
Perfect, okay.
It may go up in value because of this, because of that little outlaw there.
Okay.
May go up in value to the point where somebody may come and offer you some money because that corner, you know, for...
Cause then they wanna...
Casey's store was not, you know...
See, that's what I didn't know. I don't know if he wants to...
But we can't force you out, and your, your land is zoned residential. So it should not have any bearing on the price of your land, depending what they sold for necessarily, because it's an entirely different use, and I think you, I don't, I don't see the city assessor raising it until it actually does become another use, so... But, I mean, there's some downsides. I guess I'm, if I, if I had my druthers, I'm, and I'm not trashing the Casey's store, don't get me wrong, but they tend to have, around those type of stores tend to have more garbage than they do around a car lot, unfortunately, and not picking on them, but that's just the reality. But with the screening that they need to have for a car lot, most of this will be unseen to you, other than the backside of your properties, because they can't screen it and still allow you access with an easement, unfortunately. You're gonna, if you want that easement so you can get in, which I understand, then obviously, they can't put a fence up there.
Right, yeah, and I, I use my trailer for my parents' business, you know, so I just wanna make sure I got room to access my garage and all that.
With an easement, they're not gonna, and I hope you understand that, with an easement, you can't park things in that alleyway. You have to leave that open as part of the easement, so that they can get in and out of that alley when they need to, too. You can go across it, you can do different things with it, but you have to leave it open for them, so, just so you know.
Which property is yours again, please?
I own the middle piece, the twenty-four oh eight.
Right in here.
This is the second one, isn't it, Mr. Holmes' property?
I thought it was your property.
He lives, he lives there and he lives here, right?
No, he's, he's, he is staying with me. That's my father-in-law. I own the...
Oh, okay. Oh, same, okay.
Oh, okay.
All right, so does that answer your question?
I, I think so, yeah, you know, and I'd like to, you know, get to know Mr. Reyes, you know, and find out exactly what his plans are, you know, we can make something work, you know, and go that route.
You'll get to know each other when you start drafting the easement. Needs to be done. Thank you.
Hi, guys. I'm Mr. Reyes, as you can see. Well...
Need your address, too.
I live in thirty-two twenty-six Myrtle Street.
Thank you.
Grew up here in Sioux City. I've been living here for twenty years. Worked at the car wash at Hamilton. Took over the detail center now. I'm trying to kinda expand my business a little bit with my brothers. I mean, we're not trying to cause any beef with, you know, our residents, you know. I've lived here. I went to Crescent Park, you know, went to West High, graduated. So we're just, you know, as a new generation, we're trying to grow our business, you know, and kinda get everything going, and we just, seems like the city's making it so hard on us to open up a business, you know, like Mr. Cliff said. Now, we've been trying to rezone this for about seven months, and it's just something that, you know, we're trying to grow, you know, just like anything, you know, make our family better, get everything going, and it just seems like it's just, you know, deal after deal. And, you know, we talked to, I think, Mr. Brent over here, and we, we're willing to do whatever the city requires for us to do, you know, keeping that, that block clean. I mean, like Mr. Cliff said, I mean, most of the, that piece over there, that's all commercial. You got Casey's next to it, you got Damn Auto Sales next to it. I mean, I think it's a good investment for us to keep it all in the car business. I mean, there's a car wash in the corner, so, I mean, it's just something that we decided that lot is actually a good benefit for us. I mean, we're, we're not trying to block their way or anything. I mean, if we take over it, I mean, DOT gets on us, we have to keep it clean, we have to, you know, make it look professional, make it look presentable. I mean, the way it looks now, it doesn't look like that, you know? I think by us adding something to the city, it would actually make it look a lot nicer that, in the corner, you know?
So, so you have Hamilton touch those, right, the, the retail?
Yep, yep. I mean, I, I detail cars.
Detail, yeah, detail, I mean. Well, I can tell you that you're gonna keep it clean because you did my car in the Austin shop, so...
Yep, me and my brother's words like that.
Yeah, I can tell you, you do a great job, so...
Thank you.
I think everything's gonna look good for you, so, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, we're not trying to, you know, make it difficult on them. I know, I've lived here, you know, we're, you know, I see Sioux City really united, big family. So, I mean, if there's anything that they need from us, that's what we're there for, you know what I'm saying?
And I think that's what, they're just nervous. I mean, changes, they're like, well, putting a business right next to your house, I think you have every right to be a little nervous about that, but hopefully, you have a business owner that really seems genuine when he says that he wants to work with you on. Hopefully, hopefully, that's genuine and you're able to do that.
Oh, yeah, that's kind of how we are.
And I hope you understand, too, I think that we at the city talk a lot about customer service and wanting to be proactive in that nature, but I think this parcel of land is just a little more difficult, which is why I think it takes a little more time. So I hope you understand that. And I hope you continue to expand your business and do more. I really do, but just know that I think with this parcel of land, I think that's, that's a little bit why it's been a little bit more of a process.
Yeah, I completely understand. It's just, like I said, you know, you got younger people like us that are trying to grow a business, trying to get everything going, you know, and it just seems like you guys are just kinda blocking doors for us, you know, instead of opening them for us, you know, it kinda seems like...
This is kind of the first thing I heard about it, so I, I didn't realize that you're going through the zoning thing this long.
Yeah.
Well, you know what, though?
Six, seven months, I think.
Yeah, but I, I appreciate your comments, but by the same token, you, you have residents that are living in the vicinity. And it really is a balancing test between commercial use and residential use. And so I appreciate your comments, and I'm glad you're working with us. I, I don't think we've been difficult on this. In fact, you had staff support for all three items, and then planning zoning stepped in, and they tried to weigh that balance between the citizens that live there and then the commercial businesses that come in. And the other thing that I'm sure you're aware of, that they told you, is that, you know, just like Mr. Tufti, I mean, like I said, I, I'd take his word for what he's gonna do, because he does it. But, but the problem with zoning, once you change the zoning and you sell the business, or if you do something else or take another venture on, it might be a different operator. So that, that all has to be taken into account, so it's nothing personal to, to you or to anyone trying to develop it. It's, it's more of a zoning that's going to be there long-term, and we might, we have to make sure we address their, their concerns and actually answer their questions. And, and my experience over the years has been planning zoning does a great job of at least addressing those and at least raising the question, so by the time you come to council, you really kinda have your thoughts organized about, well, I'm opposed to it for these reasons, I'm in favor of it, so that, it's just a process that we're going through, so I...
Yeah, I'm a first time. Yeah, I'm a first time, I don't know, yeah.
Well, I appreciate, yes, and I appreciate your working with the city staff on, on this, and working with the, the neighbors, too.
Yeah, completely. Work with them, you know, like I said, we just kinda wanna grow and make it happen, you know, kinda keep it going, like everybody else, so...
We appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, you bet.
Anyone else?
Amber Holmes. I live at twenty-four oh eight Eleventh Street. My husband, my father. I guess I'm just concerned because we have lots of kids around there, you know. I don't have any personally, but there's kids all around the block. They ride their bikes in the alleys. They're there all the time. I'm also concerned about the fact with tons of people coming in to look at cars, what's gonna stop someone from coming over to my property and doing something? Which, I mean, it can happen now, but with more traffic there, what does that mean for my house or something that I have in my backyard, or they see me in my garage? Like, I just, that kinda stuff worries me. So I understand the whole wanting to grow his family and do things, which I'm just concerned about my family. We live there. It's gonna be right in our back backyard, right out, right out the side window. I mean, I don't wanna necessarily look at that every day. I already have Casey's I have to look at and all the traffic that's there with it being the highway and the Priority Street. So I guess I'm just worried about the facts, like, of safety and my personal property.
Well, I tell you what, I, I think that, that you have, Eric here is gonna work with you. And, I mean, cause he certainly doesn't want anything to happen either. You know, I, I think that everybody wants to just have a good, good relationship.
I understand that, but...
And, 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 you know, that's what it's all about, and, and I think that they'll all be able to work it out.
And also, what if that doesn't work and...
Well, what if?
You know?
There's a lot of what ifs in life.
Six months later, then there's someone there that doesn't wanna work with, you know?
Well, you got somebody right there.
I'm saying, like, if he doesn't, like, I mean, if he sells it and someone else gets that...
We can't look at it that way, you know?
I do, because this is my home, like, and until it's not my home anymore, like, those are the things I think I worry about.
You know, I've been doing this job for way long, and some people would tell you like Mr. Tufti, but I know. But the same arguments occurred on Hamilton Boulevard for a lot of years. Unfortunately, or fortunately, depending on how you wanna look at it, Hamilton Boulevard has become a commercial corridor. And we saw that, Brent, thirty-five years ago, that that's what was gonna happen on Hamilton Boulevard. And the same thing even, even before, when you did your layout of the city, two, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar deals ago, it showed this same thing occurring on Lewis Boulevard. I remember it well, because there were people, just when that came out, just people that lived there, when that came out, that said this will become the next commercial corridor, that were upset about it. But unfortunately, for those people caught in the transition, sometimes that's painful, but it is reality. This is going to be a commercial corridor. It is already all the way across the street.
I'm all right if someone hand me a check, you know, then I'm outta there, but...
You know, the same people that, that had complaints on Hamilton, which I understood, were the same people that quite frankly did cash in as they waited it out. Now, you're young enough that you're probably going to see that in your lifetime, I'm guessing. But that, I, I understand your concerns, cause I've heard it before and I get it. I really do.
Eleven years I've lived there, so...
Right, but, but quite, I, I'm disappointed that Lewis Boulevard, the commercial transition, has taken a lot longer to occur than what I thought it would, to tell you the truth. But it is gonna happen. You're not gonna see residential properties going up there, so... But it's, I'm not trying to justify my vote, and I'm not trying to minimize your anxiety, but it is reality that thirty years ago, the people that planned this corridor planned it to be a commercial corridor, and that's what's gonna happen along, whether we like it or not. That decision's pretty much been made, and so I think to your advantage, that little lot that they, I think it's better to rezone that, because the limitations of what they can do on that are pretty minor. So it's going to be a storage, and that's it. And I think that's a whole lot better in the short run for you guys than to wonder with that lot sitting there for the next ten, fifteen years, what's gonna happen? What's, at least you know it's gonna be a transition down the road, and you probably are gonna sell your house down the road, I'm guessing, so...
Okay, thank you.
That doesn't make you sleep any better, I know.
Mr. Reyes, you'll, you'll be, some, someone will be on-site when you're, what are your hours of operation? Just what do you anticipate those?
Eight to five, Monday to Friday, to two Saturday. I mean, that's kind of what we usually work on on leadership. You know, it's not like you're gonna get a lot of traffic. I know, I detail all the cars for damn before. They're right in front of us. I detail all their cars for my DL wheels.
of us, I detail all their cars for my deal wheels, they're, you know, they're not far away, which motors I've done, business with all of it, you know, I just, you know, it just seems to me that, like, that's the perfect location for us, you know, it's only gonna, I think, a long way, it's gonna better to see, you know, I mean, people are coming, we have a small car lot on West Seventh, you know, that's kind of where we expanded, we, we have fifteen cars, we no longer can fit cars there, we're trying to, you know, get a little bit bigger, a bigger lot, so, I mean, we got people coming from Sioux Falls buying cars from us, I mean, what does that tell you, that we're doing something wrong, something right, here's to city, you know, you, you got so many dealerships over there, they're coming down by from us over here, that's all we're trying to do, kind of expand our business a little bit more, and, like you said, kind of clean that place up a little bit, I'm not saying it's bad, because, I mean, it, it looks presentable, but, you know, DOT gets on, if, you know, if it doesn't look good, if, you know, it's, it's, gotta make that place look presentable, you know?
Okay, thank you. All right, are you ready to vote? Anyone else be heard?
It's on nineteen for the south portion.
Passes five zero, is anybody opposed to waiving the statutory rule?
Nope.
Move that.
Second.
Gretkin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Passes five zero, twenties, a hearing and ordinance rezoning a portion of Lewis Boulevard, PNC recommends denial of this portion of the item, two thousand eighteen, die zero zero six three, I'll move first reading. Second. And this is the one was three to three, and?
Yep, split vote.
No one to be heard?
Items moved though, right, we're not, a yes votes to approve.
Approve, yes.
That passes five zero, anybody opposed to waiving the statutory rule?
Nope.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Gretkin?
Aye.
Passes five zero, twenty-one, it's hearing and ordinance vacating the west half of the alley and the block bounded by Lewis Boulevard, tenth, eleventh, and the Buke Streets, PNC recommends in denial, I'll move that. Don't, don't go yet, guys, don't go yet, yeah, I'll move that.
Second.
Brent, I want to make sure, and I think the council would agree with this, that that easement is very clear, that it cannot be blocked with cars for sale.
We were assuming that when we do the deed to Mr. Reyes, the deed itself will include the easement language.
I just want to make sure that.
To make it very, so that, clear that it can't be blocked.
Just want you to understand, that has to remain open for these neighbors, that's all I want you to understand.
Is city legal drafting that? Not the city deed.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you said something.
Yeah, Brent said it'd be in the city deed, you'll be drafted.
Want that alley open for, for.
I, I understand, I want to make sure that it's, there's no question.
We're not gonna block that alley.
But this takes three readings, because I'd like to see that before we do.
That's fine, we can do that without, that's fine, we'll move first reading, I did, so, and then we'll do.
I think someone seconded, but if not, I'll second.
Wrong, I did, yes.
Is, is there a requirement that will require the alley to be hard-surfaced, asphalt or concrete, or we're just leaving it the way it is and gonna maintain?
If it's their alley and it's part of their car lot, it'll have to be paved.
Okay, okay.
That could be part of your site plan.
Okay.
Dan, am I hearing you correctly, uh, when this comes back for second reading, we'll have a draft of that, that deed that will include the?
Yes. Thanks, Brent. Phil's not done yet.
No, no, I, just the same thing, that that one was also a split vote, just because it went with the, the one before, so.
So because this is denial, do we vote?
It's same as last time, if you want to support the vacation, you still vote aye.
Okay.
If you want to vote for the denial, you'd vote no.
Okay.
You had voted, now it says not voted.
Hmm, well, I'm, let me try again, there you go.
Passes five zero, we will not do second and third until we get a copy of what the restrictions on the deed are gonna be, which will probably happen next week, just so you know. All right, we'll go to twenty-two, which is an ordinance naming the unnamed right-of-way south of Ravine Park Drive and north of Hulan Run, South Cypress Street, PNC recommends approval, I'll move that.
Second.
Didn't think you wanted to speak on that one, okay, passes five zero, anybody opposed to waiving statutory rule?
No.
No.
Second.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Gretkin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Move second, third, second.
Thanks, Michelle. I thought I hit it. Passes five zero, twenty-three is a hearing and ord, and resolution withdrawing a fifteen hundred dollar sever penalty and a thirty day suspension against charges mini mark twenty-three, twenty-nine, West Second Street for violation of the Iowa cigarette, I'll move that.
Second.
I, I really don't think we should do this, but we don't have any.
No, if the entity has taken the pass through the state. However, if they have another violation, um, there's no additional option if they exercise it now.
There's no language that talks about the first violation opposed to just the number of violations that they?
They can use it one time in a four-year.
At any time?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
It's four years? One time in four years?
A cigarette.
Use the compliance? If they've taken the test.
Five zero, twenty-four is a hearing resolution approving plans inspector of water treatment plant per magnate improvement project, I'll move that.
Second.
Five zero, twenty-five is a hearing and resolution granting an easement property at John Street between twenty-one oh one and twen, two thousand fifteen, Creek Road, petitioner Lisa Frink and Jay Ole, and I'd move that.
Second.
Twenty, the pass five zero, twenty-six, a hearing and resolution approving the sale of property and authorizing the city deed property at John Street, petitioner Lisa Frink and Jay Ole, and I'll move that.
Second.
Passes five zero, twenty-seven is a hearing and resolution approving the sale of property and authorizing the city deed property at John Street, petitioner Sylvia Castle, I'll move that.
Second.
Nope, nope, I was daydreaming. Aye.
Passes five zero, twenty-eight is a hearing and resolution accepting a proposal of Mid America Energy for an underground electric easement in the Donner Park Urban Renewal Area, I'll move that.
Second.
Passes five zero, twenty-nine is a hearing and resolution approving plans inspector of Martinville Airway Improvement Project, I'll move that.
Second.
Passes four zero to one, Mr. Moore abstains. Uh, tw- thirty, resolution authorizing a payment to Grand X, Rose Hill Park, approved dispatch of project, I'll move that.
Second.
I was gonna say, mayor, it's five ten, you all right?
Pass five zero, thirty-one is resolution authorizing payment to fence company for the south perimeter fence construction project, I'll move that.
Second.
Passes five zero, thirty-two is a resolution approving a subordination agreement with Heritage Bank in connection with the residential project at forty-eight hundred Southern Hills Drive, Jeff Hanson requests a deferral till January fourteenth, I'll move that deferral.
Second.
You can use your voting panels, it says deferred to January fourteenth.
Passes five zero, citizen concerns, any citizen to be heard, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, please. Seeing none, we will go to Mr. Gretkin, daydreaming.
I just wanted to mention real quickly, I received a copy of an email today from, uh, Tiffany Electman, uh, part of the West Side Neighborhood Coalition, Friday, this coming Friday, January eleventh, five to eight, is the Sioux City Neighborhood Family Fun Night at the Long Lines Family Rec Center, uh, there'll be, it's a free event for, uh, the entire community, all families, the, the climbing wall will be available, games, booths, basketball, bean tub bag toss, bouncy houses, food and more, they've done this a number of years in a row, the neighborhoods come together, so it's, it's a great event, and, and it's an opportunity to check out Long Lines and all the amenities they have to offer, and, and have a great time at virtually no cost. Uh, and then, one other quick thing, I was stopped in line at the grocery store the other day from a lady who wanted to know, and maybe you can tell me who to send the, the contact for her, she wants to start, uh, kind of like a pen pal, or start communicating with the, uh, members of the USS Sioux City, would, you think I can call the chamber, would, would maybe Carrie Gill might know?
Well, that, or, or do you have Captain Malone's information?
I, not, i- if it's in that book, maybe, is it in the book?
I think so.
Okay.
If it isn't, okay, Carrie has it.
Okay.
We're gonna post something on the website, weren't we?
Uh, I'm not sure.
Bob, didn't you get their address when those kids from Sacred Arts went there?
I just have the mailing address, I don't have a email address.
Right, but that's what he's talking about.
Yeah, uh.
You want the mailing address?
Yeah, I will email the lady that spoke to me about it, but I just need to know who to refer to.
Yeah, he just needs the mailing address.
I've got the, I've got the.
All right, I'll check it, Bob, thank you.
But aren't we posting something on our city website?
Yeah, but, but we certainly can.
Urge correspondent?
Yeah, I.
With the crew members, I, I thought that was a step we were taking.
I'll check in.
Okay, thanks.
That's all, thanks.
Although we're just all happy to be back, aren't we?
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year, that's great, and that's all I got.
Three weeks, we can only, are we out here by seven?
I tell you what, we got some time. Now, um, don't have a ton of things, I mean, there are a lot, a lot of stuff going on in the community, one, I want to highlight, uh, with the new year, Sioux City Growth Organization, Young Professionals, I really, obviously, I beat that drum a lot, because I really believe in it, I think we need to make sure that we're reminding, um, our coworkers and our friends, people that maybe have young professionals working for them or in the community, um, to get involved, and so, their first meeting of the year is happening Wednesday, it'll be at United Way over the lunch hour, I would just encourage everyone to attend.
They buy him lunch?
No, but you can bring your lunch. Join Dan, because Dan's a great member that contributes, so we appreciate that, um, yeah, that's all I have, man.
Okay, Matt Salvatore, listen up, please, now, on a serious note, I'm really proud of Cone Park, my fam, I didn't go Saturday, my family went Saturday, um, with young children, and they had the time of their life, they said the staff was the most helpful, both staff indoors and outdoors, there was a good crowd, a good turnout on Saturday, I don't know what Sunday was like because of the breeze, and it felt colder on Saturday, but, gosh, Saturday was what, forty-seven degrees and sunny, but compliments to your team, because they just, uh, and I didn't solicit that, they called me and just told me that Cone Park has got a really great operation, and they just had a really good time, and I said, how was it going up the magic carpet ride, and, and, um, they said it went well, I don't think you've had any problems with that, have you, like we did initially on the first couple of go-arounds last year, so, um, congratulations, it's really good to hear family members that are just really tooting the horn for Sioux City and what we have, so I, I appreciate that, that's all.
Things are a little tough after Christmas.
I'm gonna go see Santa Claus, because we're the underwriters.
I know, this will be a big no, but I'm gonna throw it out there, it seems to me that two, two organizations within the city, Parks and Rec and Airport, almost need their own website, our, our website, if you've gone to it, really busy, and I mean, not like lots of people using it, I mean, busy trying to figure out how to get to different places, and I just wonder if we would not be better off if we had a separate website that would say the different things we do.
Uh, Matt Salvatore, Parks and Recreation Director, we've already initiated the process to do Cone Park by itself.
Yeah, well, that's great, but that's just one entity, to try to figure out swimming and other activities.
Oh, Parks and Rec in general, yeah.
Just pull your, pull, pull that Parks and Rec out of the city website, have your own, and Cone Park sure, maybe you have your own for that, but.
Yeah.
Can't you have a link to it, though?
Yeah, but it.
Tough to get there, I mean, you go through like five different clicks, or maybe try to find things.
I lose interest if I can't click and go.
That's why we're doing one for Cone Parks with the, the pre-purchase of the ticket, we want to get people right there right away, um, so we'll look into Parks and Rec as well.
Well, and especially if you're already going to the legwork of the Cone Park one, I mean, I, I would say, I don't, I don't know, you're probably halfway down the track already, but.
You just started, just started design, so.
Because if you start thinking about that, and maybe it makes more sense to do a general Parks and Recreation one, and then, obviously, you have the big button on the side or something of what. of what they are. As long as it's easier to find, I mean, I.
Halfway down the hill.
Halfway down the hill, not the track. Yeah, we'll look into that. But maybe just think, I think it's a good idea.
The airport, too, you're s- Well, it's an enterprise sort of business. And, I don't know, did we answer Mark Stuck's concern? Did you hear about that plane got in early?
I actually tried finding it later.
He did, but he got in early and we don't have enough TSA officers to unload two planes. I could see loading, but don't we, we have two bridges, right? Why would that be a problem unloading?
Um, other than ground handling crew, maybe.
That's, yeah, that's what it is, so.
That's Tragodugan.
Yeah, well, tell them to step it up.
I'll talk to Mike about it.
Because that's, to leave people on an airplane because they couldn't get their bags? Or couldn't get the ramp out because they didn't have enough people?
They made them stay on the airplane?
Oh.
They got in early. Isn't that what you read, Alex?
Yeah, I think so.
That's what I read.
I tried going back to it to really.
Okay. Check that out and let us know. That's all I have. It's just been good to be back. Move with.
Second. Capron?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
No, no.
Make her look. Take her look.
You doze again. Say, uh, Mr. City Engineer, I know it's not your project.